Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this workshop for the Council of the Borough of Gettysburg for August 26, 2024. Announcements: An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the August 12, 2024, a monthly general business meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly work session, consistent with Section 708A1, Section 08A4, and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment and the terms and conditions of employment of current and prospective borough employees. Two, to consult with its manager and solicitor regarding updated information in connection with an appeal filed in the United States Court of Appeals for the Third Circuit, docketed to USCA Number 24-1761, captioned Linda Atia at all plaintiffs, appellants versus the Borough of Gettysburg, defendant appeli. And three, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right. Our first order of business tonight is the presentation on America 250 with Manager Gable.
In 2026, the United States will commemorate its 250th anniversary of its founding. About two and a half years ago, the Adams County Commissioners appointed a local commission called America 250 Adams County, which is a subsidiary of the state Pennsylvania America 250, which is a subsidiary of the National America 250. Governor Wolf signed that into law in 2018, and then the goal is for every county in the Commonwealth to participate in the statewide commemoration of America 250. We are talking about this because when the county commissioners formed the Adams County Commission, there was a large gathering of folks at the county planning office upon which the commissioners appointed the local Adams County Commission. There has been very little, if any, public outreach since then, because the commission was basically trying to figure out what its mission was going to be moving forward. And frankly, we were looking for a little guidance from the state's commission as well. Things are becoming to get a little more into focus, and since 2026 really is not that far away. It's start, it's time to start talking about this, not just locally here in Gettysburg, but as a member of the larger Adams County community. America 250 at the state level is predicated upon an acronym called EPIC. So if there's going to be any efforts for community involvement, engagement, events, programming, the state commission would like all of those events to fall within the EPIC paradigm, if you will. E for education, P for preservation, I for innovation, C for celebration. The local steering committee comprises of the Adams County Planning Office, the Historical Society, the Borough of Gettysburg, Destination Gettysburg, the Gettysburg Foundation, Gettysburg National Military Park, and Main Street, Gettysburg. There are subcommittees, of which I chair the Events Committee for the local Adams County Commission. I'll talk a little bit about that in a few moments. Here's the mission that the Adams County Commission came up with: engaging the Adams County community to honor the people and events that shaped our nation, to support initiatives that attract visitors, and to provide a lasting economic impact while preserving our local legacy for future generations. So this is not so much, it is part of, obviously, remembering and commemorating the history of the last 250 years, but the innovation piece to EPIC is about thinking forward, preserving our history, but also thinking about moving forward for the next generations to come. Obviously, the focus in July of 2026 is going to be on Philadelphia, and rightfully so. However, Gettysburg is uniquely positioned to continue that commemoration later on into the year of 2026, because, obviously, the nation was founded in Philadelphia but was saved right here in Gettysburg, and that's a unique story for us to tell. There's other Adams County stories that we can tell as well. There is a connection to the Revolutionary War here. Obviously, the Dobbin House is of note, because that actually was built in 1776. Obviously, our battle at Gettysburg and the Gettysburg Address. President Eisenhower, whose portrait's behind me here. We are also the America's Orchard. That's a great story for us to tell here for locally, for, I think, we're the fourth-largest apple producer in the country. And we have other local history and stories to tell as well. So it's actually not going to focus on just July or November 2026, but it's going to be a year-long commemoration. And Destination Gettysburg has actually, on their landing page, created America 250 page as well. And as we begin to build out the events throughout Adams County, that will be the warehouse, the hosting site for folks to understand what is going on in 2026 as it relates to our local history here. There are many nonprofit affiliates. These are just some of them. There are more that are signing on each day. And actually, here in Gettysburg, we're a little bit ahead of the curve in the Commonwealth in that we have already signed on to a resolution. In fact, at the time, President Heiser's name is listed on that resolution. And the idea is for every municipality in the county to sign on to the resolution, and ultimately, every municipality in the Commonwealth. These are some of the municipal partners who have passed that resolution. You can see there's several townships in a, where they must be the only borough. That's a copy of what was passed here locally a few years ago. So as we move forward, the question the commission has is, do we, as a county, not just here in Gettysburg, but as a county, envision a centralized, focused event or program that everyone at Adams County can participate in? So Carl Whitehill and I presented this to COG last week as the first outreach. Vice President Butterfield was there in attendance that morning. Did not get any feedback yet, but we would like the community, the Adams County community, to begin thinking about what that looks like. And if we do want something centralized and organized and produced by the Adams County Commission, we need to know that and what you think that should look like, and then, of course, we'd have to talk about how to fund that. But there is no real vision for that just yet. We're just beginning those conversations. And we will be sending out a municipal survey shortly, with the hope to send those back to the Council of Governments to collect them at the September meeting and begin to focus our thoughts and vision for what we think 2026 should look like here in Adams County. So that concludes my very brief remarks on Adams County, America 250 Adams County. I'd be happy to entertain questions or comments.
I have a comment. When Charles made this presentation, as he mentioned, at Council of Governments, it was very well received. And what some of the compliments were amongst the members was that Charles' presentation did focus, as you say, on the county, and we so often just focus on Gettysburg and what happened here. And they were very pleased that that was spread out to incorporate county events. The, both Destination Gettysburg and the Arts Council are looking for people's stories from the county to share during this time. If you have a story about your family's history in the county that you'd like to share, you can send it to Charles' committee or to the Arts Council. They'll be starting in October making some of these stories public. Thanks, Charles.
Great. We will be talking more about this in the coming months, so stay tuned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to our first public comment section of the evening. This section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. Those topics include the physical fitness requirements for the Civil Service Commission, the next phase of the Gettysburg Inner Loop Project, which is starting imminently, or the sidewalk ordinance revisions, specifically shade tree ordinances and procedures. If you'd like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda, we're going to ask you to wait for the second public comment section. For this first section, please limit your comments to five minutes. Please use the podium. Please name, list your name and your address of residence. Is there any public comment? Last chance? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to current and old business. The first item is the physical fitness agility requirements for the Civil Service Commission. We have two-thirds of our Civil Service Commission here with us tonight, Wes Heiser and Dave Sanders, and they have spent the last month or so researching this, and they've got some information to present to us on the requests that have been made. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind using the podium.
Like I said, Mr. Man, I could probably save some time. I withdraw my request to change the physical agility requirements of the Civil Service Commission if it gets the process moving forward. I need the, council voted several months ago.
Council voted several months ago to authorize a list. I understand a letter went out a few weeks ago now. If changing the requirements is going to delay that process any further, I need, I will withdraw those. I need that process to move forward. Our officers are getting tired. We're two officers down, and I just need the process. So if that's, if that helps, it could shorten the time up.
It does help, but these folks have put some time into this, and I'd like everyone on council to be able to understand some of the challenges when we're presented with requests like this in the future. So if you guys don't mind spending a few minutes kind of bullet-pointing this and telling us about your findings, I would appreciate it.
Sure. You know, I think that this is something that could come up again. I think it's warranted a little bit of discussion. In addition to my other responsibilities for here, over time, the last that I retain is as a Civil Service Commissioner, where I've been for the past 11 years. And one of the things that, really, my component of this is to explain a bit of why we have a civil service system, because I think it's oft misunderstood, so forgive me a bit of a history lesson, but the civil service system affecting our police officers exists to ensure that our employees here are hired based on merit. Boroughs and townships of the first class and towns are subject to this because of the population density, assumed in boroughs to be more dense, not necessarily as such, but you see this more in metropolitan areas. Civil service is critical because it creates an equitable system based upon the applicant's ability to perform the job rather than any other unrelated factors. And where this comes from is that historically, back in the 1800s, much of your government hiring was determined based on the spoils system, right? To the winner go the spoils. And that system handed out taxpayer-funded jobs, much as our borough jobs are. And often, they went to political cronies and subordinates that participated in electioneering. Much more valuable than any trinket, glass of beer or similar small bribe, those positions were meant, were used as patronage, were dispersed using taxpayer resources. The scale of this what-you-know-and-politically-based-reward system grew dramatically from 1828, when there were about 20,000 federal employees, until 1883, when there were more than 130,000. This really got its push, actually, with a presidential assassination. James Garfield was shot by a man named Charles Gatto. He lingered for a few months and died September 19. The man who was responsible for making civil service actually come to fruition in this country was his successor, Chester Arthur. And the interesting thing about that was that he himself had been a benefactor many times of the spoils system, including as the Collector of New York. But the motivation was that Gatto's reasoning for shooting Garfield was that he believed he had been unfairly passed over for a position he thought he had earned by electioneering for James Garfield. Arthur was convinced by the assassination and by a series of scandals, and in 1883, the Pendleton Act was signed, and we had a federal civil service system. That system did not come to Pennsylvania until 1941, and in that year, both state employees became subject to the civil service system, as well as municipal police officers in towns, boroughs, and townships of the first class. We ensure, work to ensure, that the applicants of these civil service positions, which are funded from the public coffers, are hired, promoted, and retained based upon solely the merit of their job duties. Dave will talk a bit to the testing process and the challenges we have there.
I spoke with Captain Zook in that PBT, Captain Zook, the Lancaster City Police Department, asking them about this Virginia Law Physical Fitness Test that they do. I asked him how often they've used it. They said they've used it one time so far, minimal or varying success. Some people failed some of it, some did all right with it. But I asked him who administered the test. He said they have their own certified fitness instructors who did the testing. Okay? I said, would you entertain the thought of Gettysburg sending our candidates to them and let them test? They said, no, they would not. It's a liability issue on their end. It said possibly they would send their instructors up here to administer the test. So that means Gettysburg would have to create the obstacle course. Brief thing of the obstacle course is they put down six to seven inches of mulch, six feet wide, 100 yards long. They're building all these obstacles that have to be built solid, people running up to them and jumping over walls, climbing through the window, and different things would be a major thing where we would do it and how we would do it. The candidate runs through this test in a minute 36 seconds. There's a lot of things to do: jump over, crawl under, that we would have to do. I don't know where we would do it, but that's something else. And I've been in contact with the PA Chiefs Association. They do not recommend the test. They do not feel it's a valid test. It's tough to, it's tough to teach the candidates what to do and how to prepare for the test. And you'll also have more physical injuries from this test than what we normally have with going with a Cooper test up at Hack. So we, the civil service, don't like this thing. We don't consider it to be a valid test. The test isn't consistent with the requirements to send our candidates to the academy. When they go to the academy, they have to pass the Cooper test. So this test isn't going to get them into the academy. The PA Chiefs don't recommend the test. The cost and logistic of setting up the test, for example, where to set it up, who will administer, and liability for the borough would be tremendous. So that's where we are. Any questions?
No questions, but I do have a memory from the last Civil Service Commission. I'd like to, if you guys could verify if I'm remembering this correctly and elaborate on it if you like, but I remember you saying something to the effect of, we benefit by having the physical fitness administered by an outside agency rather than by a borough employee?
Correct. Many years ago, we used to do the test out here on High Street and in the parking lot. But the liability would be unbelievable, so we transferred it all up that. Gettysburg still has the liability for the test, but the test is done up at Hack, Harrisburg Community College up in Harrisburg. We send the candidates up there, they test them, pass or fail, and then the results come back to us.
Yeah. And there's an added benefit that it is an independent agency that is making these assessments, and it's not one of our employees. So should somebody contest their elimination based on their scores, they're not contesting any sort of discriminatory practices on the part of the borough.
Correct.
Great. Anything else, gentlemen?
Are there questions?
Question, actually.
Yes.
I think I referred to this at the last meeting where the officer spoke about the benefit of the other Virginia, the Virginia agility tests, and that is, what if any benefit is it for recruiting officers? Or did the chiefs of police or the Lancaster City Police say that they benefit at all from the fitness test that they use? Or this fitness test? When it comes to recruitment?
They did their research on their end, but as far as Pennsylvania is concerned, it's not a valid test. As far as the PA Chiefs is concerned, it's not a valid test. We don't want to get into this, my two cents, but that...
I can speak a little bit to the benefit that Lancaster said they had. I just talked to Captain Zook earlier this week. Their failure rate on the physical agility test went from approximately in the 30 percentile range to the 15, to about 15%. And I also inquired further as to if any of the candidates they had hired after using the Virginia Law Fit test had then gone on to fail the Cooper test and not get in the academy. He said, no, they've all passed the academy entrance exam at the academy. So the benefit they realized is a reduction in failure from 30% to 15% approximately.
And then, like she said, our candidates would have to take two tests. They'd have to take the Virginia test, and they have to take the Cooper test to get into the academy. We don't want to give them two different tests.
Well, and one of the, one of the factors to be aware of there is that with Hack administering the examination test for the physical agility, and Hack also being, by default, almost certainly the police academy that they will attend, they take that Cooper test once. Well, they take it once upon for entrance, can be for hiring and entrance, they also take it prior to graduation. The logistics for the Virginia Law test are challenging, including maintaining the obstacles and whatnot over time, who would allow you to put it on their property. As part of the Virginia Law test, at the end of it, they have to at least dry fire their weapon twice. From a safety standpoint, I know if opinions vary, but I've been using firearms a long time, and there are difficulties with doing that and how, where that would occur. It just, it just seemed like a bit too much of a mountain to climb to make this happen, especially then if you would have a candidate that you're hiring as potentially as a cadet, pass the Virginia Law Fit, and then what does happen when they go to Harrisburg and they fail the Cooper? Now we've really created a situation that just did not need to be created.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chief, you're saying that you, could you just be more clear about when you started? You said you don't want the, to change it?
No. If change, if, if the fact that we requested to change the physical agility requirement of the civil service process is what's holding up the civil service process, then I withdraw my request. I need that process to start moving forward, both from a morale standpoint and a, you know, officer wellness and safety and tiredness standpoint. So I need that to move forward.
Keeping in mind, we're getting toward the end of the year. Apparently, council decided to ask the Civil Service Commission to do this back in April. I wasn't notified till a couple of weeks ago. So right now, to get somebody into the academy, we're probably not going to do it in January. It's probably going to be June? Is that when the next council?
We'll make the January academy. I'm pretty confident. We have to make the January academy.
That's going to cut down on your advertising time and where you're going to go and blah, blah, blah.
It is. It is, once again, yes, but it's, we can't, we need officers before June. I mean, and that's realistically, anybody that we put in the academy is not coming to us till June, and then there's another three or four months of training on top of that, which puts us towards the end of next year before those positions are actually fruitfully, if you will, filled.
Yeah, actually, operable.
So I, from an operational standpoint, I just need this to start.
Thank you both. Does anybody have any final questions for the Civil Service Commissioners? All right. So I just want to remind everybody on council and those watching at home that the Civil Service Commission is one of our 10 authorities, boards, and commissions. These gentlemen are here as volunteers, as citizens of the borough who care about our processes and this very important aspect of our governance and how we, how we hire civil servants. And I just want to extend my gratitude to both of you, not only for the time you spend on the commission, but also for the extra time you spent researching this and other issues that have come up over the years. Thank you both, and please pass my thanks on to Andy as well. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. All right. So that takes us to an update on the next phase of the Inner Loop Project that is scheduled to start in the next week or so. Mr. Gable? Oh, there you are.
There's a lot of moving around in here tonight.
Be stealth, Charles.
Okay, this is more of an update than anything else. If you remember when the borough bid this out, we had, I believe, four companies bid on this project. It's a project that is a must. We must do this. And unfortunately, the low bidder actually came in significantly higher than was originally budgeted, which, to be honest, can't be a total shock to any of us in the room as we understand inflationary pressures that are, that are happening, not just locally here, but nationwide. The good news to that, however, is, if you remember, we both, we asked both Gettysburg Municipal Authority and the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to increase each of their contribution towards the overall project by $100,000 each. And both have agreed to do so and have, have voted to do so. If you look at this funding strategy, I want to point your attention to these bottom numbers. This is what the stormwater component of this project comes to, which is just under $491,000. And you can see, Stormwater Authority has agreed to contribute $330,000 of what would be their normal bill if they were doing this project in a vacuum, meaning without the assistance of other entities. Similarly, with the, with the GMA down here, their, their average bill comes to $477,000, and they have agreed to contribute $325,000. So you can see both of those organizations are receiving a significant cost savings by partnering with each other, including the borough, on this overall project. Overall, the project is $1.95 million. It's not an inexpensive project. We were able to haggle a little bit with York Excavating as it relates to traffic control, which I'll go over in detail here in just a moment. So combined, they've reduced their, their overall bill to us by about $30,000. The reason this project needs to get done this year is right here, CDBG. This has been a source of discussion for some time. The, the window of opportunity to use those federal dollars, CDBG, we had a hearing on, not related to this, but we had a CDBG hearing earlier tonight. If we don't use these funds in the next few months, we will lose the funds. They're expiring, terming out, if you will, which means returning that money to HUD is not a good, a good strategy moving forward, especially if we want to continue to be receiving CDBG funding moving forward. There is a grant. DCNR has given us a $250,000 grant, so part of the bill is being paid for through that. And then, of course, our partners, our local partners with HABBY, the bicycling group, Healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian, Inc., has raised over the years $149,000. So all said and done, after all that is deducted out, the Borough of Gettysburg is still on the hook for $603,000 of this overall project. We do have the money, so that's, that's not a concern, but what is of a concern is we need to get moving. And so, to that, I'd like to go over... And so, to that, I'd like to go over the traffic plan. There are going to be five phases of the traffic plan. Now, I know Chad Clayball, our borough engineer, went over this in some detail at the last meeting, however, I'd like to go over this in a little more detail tonight, just to reiterate it and also make sure our partners at Community Media broadcast this, because we did receive some feedback on social media recently that people don't know what's going on. So we have been talking about this at length for some time, but I want to go over this specifically and give it a little more airtime tonight. Phase one is on the screen in front of you. You can see here that this hashed area is where a road closure will occur. This is where the road will be shut down between Chambersburg Street and the intersection at Racehorse Alley. Of biggest concern are the businesses here, Flower Shop Antica Pizza. I want to reiterate this, every phase of this project, these businesses will have access. That's been misreported in the paper and commented on, on social media. These businesses will always have access. It may be a little inconvenient, but there will always have a driveway apron open to them to access these businesses. So here, you can see, the northernmost driveway apron remains open. You can see the arrows going in both directions. So they are taken care of through phase one. There is a subsection of phase one, phase one A, which deals with just the intersection of Washington Street and Racehorse Alley. This is going to, the road will be open, but it will be flagged. So it'll be one way in each direction based on the needs of the construction crew during this phase. But again, businesses here, both driveway aprons are open for their access during phase one A. Phase two, we're moving a little further north. Now we're talking between Racehorse Alley and right before the railroad tracks. Again, this would be a closure for the entire street with the exception of a temporary walkway for Gettysburg College students who need access to the rear side of these buildings here. Again, you can see the driveway apron on the northernmost side closest to the train tracks remains open for these businesses to access and conduct their business. Next phase. This is where we get into the nonstop boring under the tracks. North Washington Street will be closed for a maximum of two straight weeks, 24 hours a day. This has to be done, this is a CSX requirement, where it has to be a continuous bore until the project is complete. It could take as few as five days or as many as 14 days, all dependent on what they encounter as they're boring under the tracks. And Robbie assures me they're going to find rock. So I would bet on the longer of the two, just to be safe. But again, access to these businesses can be done here on the southernmost driveway Now we are getting close to the conclusion of the project as we move up Washington Street to Constitution. Again, the road will be open, but one lane at a time based on the needs of the construction crew and flagged by flagger force. So those are the, the five phased traffic plans for this very important inconvenient project. The good news is it's only four months. It could be a lot more, very best to take into consideration businesses that are operating right there along railroad street. So if there's any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to entertain them. I can't get into the technical things, I'm, I'm not the engineer and Mr. Clayball's not here tonight, but... Any questions?
This is great, thank you. So I missed on the very last one, convenient and maybe a different route than people are used to, they are available. Do the businesses, have the businesses been able to get perhaps a picture of this so that they can give to their clientele, maybe have it at their counter of, of each phase as far as where their access for their clients could be?
It, it's my understanding that these maps have not been given out for public dissemination.
Okay. But now that it's public record, we could feasibly give...
In, in theory, we could be...
One printed copy to...
Okay. As long as it doesn't create more confusion.
Sure, sure.
Which is a fear.
Right. And... Of other, I assume there are residential units in that area that may be affected?
I'm not aware of any, Robbie. Do you know of any?
Um, no. No, like, these, these are all college. There may be some apartments, but they have access off of Racehorse Alley.
Right, right.
All right, I, sorry, I'll rephrase. The, so, not for accessibility, but they're going to hear it during those two weeks of 24/7.
They are, and the college is aware of that and is communicating that to...
Got it, thank you.
Their, their folks, yep.
That's very helpful, though. Thank you.
Robbie, can you use the microphone?
So I'd also like to make a note that the, the, the road closure phases, with the exception of the 24-hour dig, the road will be open, or the road will be closed from 6:30 till 4:30. After that, it will be open every evening.
That is an important distinction, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. And at the pre-construction meeting last week, there was an order that Chad had brought up last month, with the order starting at Chambersburg Street and working towards Stevens Avenue. At the pre-construction meeting, the order has changed to reverse, to start at the, at the Stevens Run and work their way towards Chambersburg Street. So the phases will just be opposite.
So phase five is actually now one, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah. They're going to start phase five first.
The mechanics of each phase does not change, it's just the order in which they're done.
It's, they're going to be, with the stormwater especially, they need to start at the Stevens Run and work their way upstream instead of downstream, because they won't be able to do that. The water's a different situation, but while they're doing that, they're going to do both at the same time and work their way up towards Chambersburg Street.
And this is, as, as Mr. Gable said, has been ongoing for a long time, but for the folks that are saying that they didn't know about it, I want to reiterate that this is not just for the Inner Loop, that we are doing some substantial work on our stormwater management at the same time for the town.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Charles, Charles or Robbie, do either of you know when they do the, the long closure over railroad tracks? Or is that just going to be the plastic barricades? Are we going to use Jersey barriers for the, the...
That's going to be up to the contractor. They're going to be responsible for that road closure. They're going to be responsible for all the road closures, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't answer what they're going to do there, but, but I do know that they're responsible for the road closures.
Okay. Anything else?
What was the exact start date?
Uh, it's the week of Labor Day.
It'd be the day after Labor Day.
Okay. So that's the third.
Yep, they'll start on the third.
And so you're saying four months, so it could go into December?
It will go into December, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, no, this is a big project. We've talked about this a lot. We've talked about the necessity of getting these water issues resolved. This is the foundation for even more work that we absolutely have to get done. And I, I think we need to be really cognizant of the, not only the impact on the neighborhood and the businesses and the residents there, but also the efforts by our partner organizations of GMA and the Stormwater Authority in helping us figure out the funding model here. I did speak with one of the local business owners who's very concerned about this, has a lot of anxiety about it, which I think is totally understandable. And looking at the scope of this project, it's so massive and getting it done in, in four months is actually pretty amazing. When phase A of the Inner Loop project went through my neighborhood, it was, aspects of it were much more simple than this and it took 14 months. So I think the amount of work we're going to be pushing to get done in a short amount of time here is, is not only crucial, but it's admirable that we're getting it done like this. So I want to express gratitude for the hard work put into this and also the traffic management does seem pretty complicated, but this is also based on the input from council at previous meetings where we really, I think, made it clear that we need the, the impact on these local businesses to be as minimal as possible so that they are able to stay open and conduct their business. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, sir. Now, are you going to do sidewalk ordinance from there? Are you coming back? All right. All right. So you all recall that as part of our legislative priorities for the year, we are taking a hard look at sidewalk ordinance revisions and the spider web of implications that even small changes have. And tonight, we had set aside time to discuss the sidewalk revisions and specifically how they intersect with the Shade Tree ordinance and procedures from Shade, the Shade Tree Commission. Mr. Gable was at last month's, or this month's Shade Tree meeting and has some things to report.
Oh, I guess that's me again. Yes, so if we remember, council had asked that Shade Tree begin to employ, here we go, a formalized process on the deliberations on where, when, and how shade trees are planted in the community. And David Rice, the Chair of Shade Tree, provided the, the narrative to me of what they are beginning to embark on. And that is copy and pasted in your policy briefing, some verbatim. You can see at their August meeting, they proposed that committee members propose sites for fall planting. The commission will then discuss those sites and they incorporate the thoughts of Mr. Harbaugh, Public Works Director, estimate how many sites the department can accommodate in a fall planting season. They also consider the species of tree that they would plant or replace at that August meeting. Then in September, the commission reviews responses from the property owners. So the specific request from council was that the Shade Tree Commission do a little more outreach to folks in the community so we can avoid someone waking up in the morning to find, you know, a saw going at it in the sidewalk in front of their door stoop and suddenly in comes a tree and gets plopped in the hole. Which, it's my understanding that in years gone by, that this is kind of the, the process that used to exist, but at some point was abandoned. So that makes sense. You know, we want to be open and transparent and, and get people's feedback and, and buy in to, to that. And then in October, Public Works reports to the commission on the progress of the plantings, any contingencies that have arisen during, during their work. The Shade Tree Commission is also beginning a process of auditing every shade tree in the borough. Susan Noggle and David Rice are leading that effort on the Shade Tree Commission, where they're going to canvas the borough, note which trees are where and the species of the tree. Those will be geo-tagged, so we have an accurate, electronic mapping of the locations and species of the trees. And while they're doing that, they're also going to assess the condition of the sidewalk around the trees that they are auditing. Because if we remember, part of the discussion is how to maintain in good repair the sidewalks related to, adjacent to a shade tree. We always hear stories, horror stories of, "You plopped a tree in front of my house, now you're making me be responsible for it." And oh, by the way, the tree is now heaving the sidewalk and I'm responsible for that as well. Understandable consternation from folks and property owners in town. So we're all collectively wrestling with best policies moving forward on that. So Shade Tree is embarking on that. It will take some time. There's a lot of shade trees in, in the borough overall. There is an audit from 2009 that we rummaged up in the recesses of the archive room somewhere, but it does exist, but obviously 2009 is so far gone. It's probably a good place to start, but it's, I would probably believe it's fairly out of date and not accurate, but nonetheless, it exists and they're using that to get started. So those are my updates as it relates Shade Tree, as it relates to the overall sidewalk ordinance, which is the behemoth that we're, we're talking about.
All right. So moving forward, rather than making this inventory, you know, a sort of a decennial sort of thing that is a, a big lift for any given, you know, volunteer commissioners, perhaps we can encourage them to make that inventory, you know, a shared document somewhere that Mr. Harbaugh has access to and when he has to remove a tree, you know, he can note that. When he adds a tree, it can be updated there. So it's kind of a living document as opposed to a once every 20 years, whether we need it or not, sort of thing.
Right.
We do also, we have areas where shade trees, you know, that were placed by the borough, particularly the decorative pears, have come down and heaved the sidewalk and then, so the trees that came down were removed, but the sidewalk is still heaved. So that'll be a challenge to include in this inventory of damaged sidewalk that should be the borough's consideration, but we do need to keep an eye out for that as well.
We, we do now have a case study, and Robbie, I'm going to put you on the spot here. So, you know, belly up to the microphone.
Okay.
We do have a, a case study where Robbie's team did take a tree down. And do you want to talk about the condition of the sidewalk that you discovered during that?
Sure. So out on Stevens Street, 380 Stevens Street, we took two trees down. Shade Tree Commission agreed to take the trees down and the homeowner was going to replace the sidewalk. So I know you've been talking about different things of, like the borough crews removing the sidewalk and the homeowner replacing the sidewalk. So we did a trial run on this. It turned out to be somewhat of a nightmare, because there were so many underlying issues with those tree roots. Damaged downspout lines, gas lines wrapped around the tree roots where we could not grind the tree out. Same way with the water lines. There was just so many different issues that we weren't encountering. We thought we'd just go in there, we'd pull out the sidewalk, move on, and they put the sidewalk in, and that didn't work that way. So that's something to take in consideration.
Yep.
Clearly, that's going to happen in multiple locations.
And I, and I actually think this one was kind of minor compared to the other ones that are out there, like the ones that have eight-inch heaving sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So it sounds like the Shade Tree Commission has been responding to our input, so thoughts, feelings, input?
Decades ago, when the borough went on a tree planting exercise, extraordinary, a lot of research was done. Harry, you will remember, as to the type of trees they would focus on. And they selected the Bradford pear because the root system went down instead of out, woo, sorry, which many maple variations do. And so there is Robbie's problem, the Bradford pear roots go down. So consequences of things done in the best intentions comes around.
Well, can I add one more thing?
Of course.
The majority of the trees that are problems are pre... The majority of the trees that are problems are pre-Shade Tree Commission problems, because they were planted before Shade Tree Commission was even established.
Yep. Yep. Please.
They were planted by the borough before the Shade Tree Commission was established.
Maybe.
Yeah, nobody knows.
We don't know, because there was no, there was no document, then there's sort of a document now.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the planting strips are the planting strips, right, and they are your personal property when you own the parcel, so it's possible that homeowners.
That a homeowner did.
Put a tree in there 50 years ago, yeah.
And it grew and grew, who knows?
Yep. But it's our problem now.
Of course, always. Yeah, I agree that the, that the, that the working document, at the very least, should be shared with the Public Works Department so that some more communication can be had on reporting to the borough directly, especially if Shade Tree Commission is, while it's one of our ABCs, it's directly connected with the Public Works Department, and therefore, I think, the more data that, that that department has on it and can report back to us, the better. Especially since we're not getting a report from the Shade Tree Commission as often as we do, or even recommendations such as we do from some of our other ABCs. I think that while as old as that previous document, I think you mentioned 2009, might very well be, and some of those trees might not even, not be there anymore. They probably were removed by the borough, maybe during the Shade Tree Commission. We should still keep a documentation of those trees that were removed, why they were removed, and maybe not put a tree back in that exact same spot after they were removed for some particular reason that the borough thought they should have been removed.
Well, so, you know, a lot of it has to do with the breeds, right? So the Bradford pears specifically are problematic because, although they're pretty, right, they have this sort of structural deficit, which is when they get to about 25 years old, they have developed these deep V-shaped, you know, crotches in the, in the limbs, and they get so heavy, they just split down the middle. And in a, in a heavy storm, they tend to split that way, too, so they can, they can come down pretty quickly. Others might have been removed just because they died, right? We, you know, it's hard, it's hard to know.
Right, so, yeah, so going forward, I hope that we'll get, keep better documentation of that, of why they were removed. Was it because?
Yeah.
It was causing, was it because it was just a poison tree and it can be replaced, and it wasn't causing damage to the sidewalk? Or was it because, oh, it's a poison tree and it's causing damage to the sidewalk? Why plant another one if it's causing damage to the sidewalk? Why plant another one eight years later? Makes no sense to me. But, again, I wanna voice, as I voiced before, I have no issue with the trees. I have no issue with the trade commission. I have issue with the process. I do, however, think there are already a lot of trees in the downtown business district. Some of them rather close together, in my opinion, where there are other places in the downtown district that there's no trees at all. So I hope that the Shade Tree Commission will really look at that whenever they walk through, and that map will really help us. And I would like to, to assist in that measure with Shade Tree and with Public Works of where are they going and why? Because it's not just a matter of what are they doing to underground, what are they doing to our sidewalks, what are they doing to scratching the, the buildings themselves when they're overgrown, but also the aesthetic of, of the downtown as well. When, when there are indeed other places within the borough that trees could be that might not be such an effect on, for example, downtown buildings or heavy tourist pedestrian traffic slapping us in the face as we're walking and trying to shop and visit. You know, there are other, there are many, many places in the borough that these trees could be. Again, if they're not causing damage and whatnot. I saw Robbie's hand go up, though.
Yeah, I just have a comment. You said there's a lot of places that, some of the streets are bare. One of the cases is East Middle Street here. The south side of the street is where the gas line is, so they don't plant trees above the gas lines. So that's why there isn't any on the south side of East Middle Street, along with some other different streets that they, that Columbia Gas has done. Because they were trying to move their gas lines out of the street, so they didn't have to dig up the street as much for leaks and repairs, so they moved it underneath the sidewalk because it's easier to replace sidewalk than it is to pave a street. So they moved them in the sidewalk. Now their tendency of going back to the street when they do projects, but it's back and forth. But, but you'll see some places that don't have trees on sidewalks because of that. And I do know, when, back in, I think, 2013 or 2014, whenever we started removing the pear trees, down Chambersburg Street, down York Street, up Baltimore Street, we took the pear trees down, grinded the stumps down enough to get, to get concrete on top and put concrete over top of a, a tree stump, because to replant a tree over that, they could, you could not, with the opening, you could not get all the root out there to plant another tree. So they, they covered it over, made a new opening beside, put a tree in. So if you try to go back to that pear tree to put a tree back in there, you're probably not gonna be able to.
Yeah. Yeah, I also want to say, too, that, you know, the Shade Tree Commission is much like the Civil Service Commission. It's comprised of dedicated and caring members of our community. People with deep roots here and a deep sense of civic engagement and responsibility, and I don't think any of them ever intended to operate in a way that would raise the community's ire. And if we do have questions about their standards and practices, the best place to engage with that is at their meetings. So I would encourage everybody to start attending those. Any other comments or questions?
I would just ask if the, the worst, you know, heaved parts of the sidewalks with the trees in them, have those species been identified and banned from replanting? Or is it not a necessarily a species issue, but an age issue?
I think Robbie might be able to speak to that more fully than I.
So the majority of the ones that have eight-inch heaving or six-inch heaving, whatever, the majority of those are larger diameter trees that have been planted before the Shade Tree Commission was even established, and most of them are maple and oak. Does that answer your question?
And we don't plant maple and oak anymore?
We do.
Okay.
But in certain areas.
All right.
I think in general, both the commission and the Department of Public Works are very, very aware of what species work and which ones don't, and how to plant them better than we have in the past, including root barriers and, and things like that, that direct those roots downward instead of outward. You know, we're learning as we go. The necessity of planting these things, it, these are, you know, they're not just decorative. They also serve utilitarian purposes in controlling our local climate, making sure we don't become a heat sink. There are, I think they have a list of, I think last time I saw it, it was maybe 20 different species that they're currently planting, and some are going in some areas and some are going in other areas, depending on. We have areas where the, the, you know, you've got a good six-foot by six-foot square in the sidewalk where you can plant, and then we have other areas where the planting strip is 18 inches wide. So you're gonna put different species in those different circumstances.
I do know the Shade Tree Commission right now is reviewing the tree list to delete some of those trees, but adding some different ones that would be better. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Matt, just for historical reference, when was the Shade Tree Commission established?
Oof, anybody have that off the top of their head?
It's relatively recent, right?
I want, I want to say it was back in the, in the early 80s.
Oh, okay. In the community here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can do an ordinance search on that, but.
I, I, I probably can get that answer for you pretty quick, but he's not here. Mr. Lawver probably knows.
Well, that was old Tom Smith, the one he always.
Because, because Jane Scott was on the commission first, and him and Jane worked hand in hand when they planted trees. If John had a, she had a recommendation, and it, and John found out it's too close to a gas line or water line, he recommended not to put it there, and she listened, and they moved to, to a different location.
Looks like maybe 1990-ish.
Yeah, 1994.
Oh, was it, okay.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, there's, the express authority of a Shade Tree Commission dates back to 1990, and then there are revisions to our local ordinance in 94.
Yeah, it looks like 1990.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Please.
It says that in their, in the August meeting on their process, that they will be con, that a member of, sorry. Let me read that correctly. Following the August meeting but before the September meeting, commission members contact the property owners of the chosen sites to determine if they are agreeable to the plan. And then it says in the September meeting, the commission reviews the responses from the property owners and finalizes the sites where the trees will be planted. What, do, do we know, Robbie, or Mr. Gable, do we know what, if the property owner says no, do they still go with what they want to do, or is there a discussion there, or it doesn't have, it doesn't give any relevance to, any detail to that?
Do you want me to chime in here, Charles?
Sure, if you have.
Okay, so I, I do know, in the spring planting, they contacted the property owners. They did get one, two rejections back, and they decided not to plant a tree there anyway. You know, they, they respected the property owner, and they moved it to a different location. But there was also a comment at the meeting that, you know, we will take that into consideration, but if we want to plant a tree there, we have the right to plant a tree there.
That's correct.
So they have the right to plant the tree, but the property owner is still responsible for that sidewalk, including the leaves and the damage that, that tree might do to that sidewalk?
Well, we're taking, I mean, that's the, the consensus that we've heard over the last several months is that we will be taking responsibility for any damage that is specifically is caused by shade trees.
Thank you.
Now, if it's a tree in your yard that was not planted by the borough and is not part of the Shade Tree program, and it happens to heave the sidewalk, you know, that's not gonna be the borough's responsibility.
While I appreciate the process that they're putting into place and asking the property owners, because it's not nice when they don't at all, it's a courtesy call. At the end of the day, it's gonna be their decision, but I just wanted on record that if it does indeed cause damage to the sidewalk, that they plant it anyway.
Right, no, so, I mean, that's gonna be true for every aspect of our government, though, right? I mean, we receive public comment, but that doesn't mean we derail all of our plans every time we get a public comment. Each of our authorities is empowered to act based on their mandate and the wisdom that the membership bring to the process. We will often make decisions that a property owner may have, take issue with, but that doesn't mean it's not in the best interest of the borough. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, gentlemen, for the discussion. We have nothing on our new business for this evening, so that takes us to our second public comment section of the agenda. This section is not reserved to items appearing on the agenda. You may speak on any topic. We ask that you use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes. We need your name and address of residence.
My name is Nancy Goodmisted. I own 309 and 307 Baltimore Street, and I'm here again to talk about the meter bags and hope that you will seriously reconsider your decision about Christ Lutheran Church, where the borough parking department will put the meter bags on on Saturday evening, and then the parking department or the police department will remove them on Sunday morning. This past weekend, I believe they went on, I don't know exactly, but somewhere around 6:45, there are six restaurants on that street, so from 6:45 on, eight parking places were gone. And I drove down that street about 5:00 after 1:00 on Sunday, and the streets were packed with pedestrians. Every single parking space was taken, but there were eight spaces sitting there vacant. And I just think, you know, if you're supposed to be business friendly as a borough council, that doesn't seem very fair. You know, because when I think about it, I don't know for sure, but I think each one of you here works, works for somebody. So if we get two feet of snow and the borough is closed for a couple of days, you probably still get your paycheck. If there's an electrical outage and we have to close the street, street down, you probably still get paid. If there's a pandemic, you probably still get paid. But all of us little mom and pop businesses, if we're closed, or if we can't have anybody parking in front of our businesses, we are at a loss. And if you want to be business friendly, I really would encourage you to work with the businesses. So I appreciate that. I hope that you will really, really reconsider that decision because it's really hurting a number of businesses on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.